Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out tonight. We'll start this meeting to order and we'll stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance... Alright, thank you for coming out again. And we're gonna start tonight's meeting with our spelling bee winners.
Good evening. Um, we every year participate in a local spelling bee here at SOTUS that includes our 4th through 8th grade students. All students participate in the spelling bee, so um, that's well... Five and eight is four hundred students. I probably should have done that at the head of time. So approximately four hundred students take a written spelling bee test. And what we do is we go through the tests in this forum and take the very top spellers here at SOTUS. Dan Tidlow and Brenda Ven help run the spelling bee for our district and we invite the top spellers to participate in a district spelling bee. That takes place in February in our auditorium and we had seventeen students participate this year. And I'm very excited to introduce to you our top three spellers, two of whom could be here with us today. So Brendan Rose was our top speller. He's a seventh grader. And here at SOTUS, he was our top speller and when he represented us in Wayne Finger Lakes Regional Spelling Bee, he came in seventh out of thirty-seven. So that is a huge accomplishment. Maya Verbridge is here. Maya is a sixth grader and at the regional bee, again, Wayne Finger Lakes, she ended up coming in eighth. So congratulations. And then third place is eighth grader Simon Thomas. If he could come on up. And again, this is such a huge accomplishment. These kids have to get up in front of their peers and stand in front of the microphones to spell some extraordinarily difficult words pretty early on in the bee, right? Like you think, well, maybe they'll start us off easy and they don't. So nice job. Congratulations.
Just a quick comment about the spelling bee. The spelling bee is open to all twenty-five schools in the Wayne Finger Lakes region and not all schools participate in it. And I'm really, really proud of our school for keeping the spelling bee alive. Our staff members, they, you know, they dedicate their time to making it happen. And to see our students participate and go to the regional bee and do so well, you know, is something that we all can be proud of. And as Dr. Reed said, you know, spelling in front of your peers is not an easy thing to do. And not all students are willing to participate. And these three students, you know, rose to that occasion and did exceptionally well. And we're very, very proud of all three of you. Congratulations.
Alright, that will conclude our recognition. We are going to move on to our reports. We're gonna start with the Walt Whitman.
So good evening, everyone. Dr. O'Leary's eighth grade honors English class submitted a poetry anthology entitled "Sailing Spartans", a collection of offbeat journeys as a part of their poetry unit to the Walt Whitman Earthquake Society. This year's poetry contest, held by the Walt Whitman Society, asked students to reflect on Walt Whitman's work "Song of the Open Road", which was first published in the second edition of Leaves of Grass in eighteen fifty-six. This poem celebrates the road as a space where people can come together in a meaningful way, where status and social strata matter less. In thirty lines or less, students were asked to use their poetic voice and Whitman's literary device of free verse to show us their road. Where will you go? Who will you see? What will you learn during your adventure? They were required to use their five senses to describe their environment, the obstacles they may encounter, and the helpers they meet along the way. It is with great pleasure that I introduce Dr. O'Leary and the members of the junior senior high school eighth grade honors English class.
Thank you so much. Obviously, you can see we have three members here tonight. Many are participating in the after-school activities, which is also fantastic. And our students would like to also share out their poems with you as well. That's okay. So basically, like Dr. Reed said, this was actually... So this is a picture I took a long time ago. This is my twentieth year teaching. And Molly talked with the interview committee in the summer and talked to you, Mr. Heiss. I said, this is something I wanted to continue. So, you know, twentieth year is the sixteenth class award and honor with that, as well as forty-nine individual student awards and something near and dear to me, just growing up around the corner from Walt. And being able to take his poetry and for our students, take six weeks to look at one piece of poetry and create and go back and create and go back is something very valuable that our students are able to reflect on and not just say, okay, I'm done and go through it. I'd show the students that the opportunity that one day maybe we could visit there. We'll put it for a field trip, which would be an excellent place to go. But we'd like to introduce our students and they'd like to read a couple of their poems with you. That's okay.
My name is Elise Newell and I will be reading "The Horizon of Earth". The colors of orange and pink blend in with the horizon together like an elaborate smoothie. Sitting on the hillside, watching as the sun goes down, like the must but reviving others. As on this hill, we ponder. Ponder which challenges the day will come and going to break. Seizing every moment as the sun paints its watercolors all across the mountainous sky. Listening to the animals of the day settle as the sun lets the animal kingdom get time to rest. As the animals of the night verify and design what makes this moment ever so precious, these moments are forever cherished through betrayal and through memories. Particular moments are worn down from one folk to the next, experiencing pure grace. These folk are yearning for the intimacy of this twilight burst hand looking at a beautiful sight. As we embrace these moments and are born with this lovely landscape to delineate these said beauties in a non-real and adoring manner. The photogenic sky is beautifully prone to beautiful pieces of art.
My name is Ariana Montorano and I'm going to be reading "Beauty is Gone". My road is weathered and broken. My path was empty and open. My road is aged and ancient. The earth is green and new. My road is now worn as hard as stone. But my path is free, though, of course, the horse has called home. My road is now a metal playground. We're building to touch the sky. But my path was adventurous. One wrong step and you would die. People ventured on my trail oh so long ago when little wooden vehicles glazed the plateau. They were in such a hurry to win the race, soon there was little beauty left to embrace. The mountains were treacherous and tall. Many little vehicles happened to fall. My road looks plain, nothing for a documentary. But the path was full of horrors. But it lived in every memory. When the little wooden vehicles did not get into motion, Mother Nature would have opened and the little wooden vehicles would be frozen. And when the little wooden vehicles would not go fast enough, the sky would turn black and the wind would puff. The little wooden vehicles would be fluffed. My road is now destinations for cities and for schools, but the whole lot of them are fools. The path was beautiful before, but we wanted more. While the baby is gone with nothing to hand.
Hi, my name is Dylan Robinson and I'll be reading "The Band Journey". Before I started the journey, I thought band class just sounded like complete nonsense. But I joined it anyway. The beginning of the journey was rough and confusing. But I started to get the hang of it. I started to enjoy it and find it easy. What I thought sounded absolutely terrible now sounding majestic to me. Every class, I would get consumed in notes, beats, and sounds. We weren't our best, but we tried our best. And that was all that mattered to me. Then the most important part of the journey starts, the concert. I was ecstatic, confident, and I was ready. We played our hearts and we were outstanding. The audience roared with applause, cheers, and screams of joy. Then the journey comes to an end. I was sad that it was over and I was excited for next year because of new music and new people. And then I come to realize the journey I took was really fun and exciting and interesting and I was ready for the next one. Thank you.
So I just want to comment how they celebrated each other and supported each other. And I can't be more proud of these students and the work that they're doing and just the character that they show towards our community. So thank you guys. Congratulations.
To all of our families that are here, the next portion will be our meet the candidate portion of the night. You know that some of you have other activities. If you have to leave, that's certainly okay. You're more than welcome to stay for the rest of our meeting. But I just wanted to let you know because I know you have a lot going on this time of year.
No, I just wanted to make sure. Okay, thank you all. We are now gonna move on to the meet the candidates and we'll start off with Mr. Rob. You can...
Doesn't matter.
No, whichever.
You can take the mic off.
You can take the mic. As long as you're talking into the mic, it's not waiting to hear you. I guess that's the most important. I mean, we're meeting you as well, so I'll let you go.
Good evening. My name is Rob Shute. I've been a community resident for thirty-four years. I'm married and raised two children here and they're both graduates of this school. They graduated near the top of their classes and went on to earn, uh, went on to higher education and fulfilling jobs. I graduated from Rochester Institute of Technology and Computer Engineering and was employed at Xerox Corporation for thirty-four years. In 2020, I became aware of progressive forces making inroads in public education. I began spending significant time researching what was taking place in public education. As part of this, I began attending Board of Education's meetings here in July of 2021 and spoke then and have continued to speak about things that I had learned and concerns I had. I have continued to attend Board of Education meetings since then now for almost three years. I believe I have only missed two monthly meetings and they were for family vacations. I've probably attended more monthly board meetings over the past three years than the board members. This is not at all, please don't get me wrong. This is not to disparage the board members. Everybody's busy. But merely to demonstrate the level of commitment I've had these past three years. I've researched, prepared, and spoken in the public comments section at most of these meetings. I've reviewed library books, school policies, instructional materials, and made freedom of information requests to better understand the district. Last fall, I attended an state conference on public education and advocating for parents. I've watched many presentations at these monthly board meetings, particularly those reviewing the aptitude scores of the students in core subjects. Disappointingly, our students continue to be, uh, continue to remain below expectations across many grade levels. We need to do better. This will be an area of particular focus where I serve on the board. The student's ability to excel in core subjects is critical to their drive, to drive their success in careers and life in general. Their success in career in life will largely mirror their success at mastering core subjects while here. I'm a believer that facing the truth is the only real path to improvement. We can't just always project that we have an amazing school while many of our students are behind academically. We do have a great school, but we also have persistent challenges and we need to be honest and transparent with the community. I also believe that parental involvement is crucial. I believe in full transparency to parents regarding what is being used to instruct their children. I'm not in favor of anything being kept from parents and I believe parents should have the final say regarding participation in controversial topics. I welcome communication from parents on their point of view of their child's education and will do my best to represent the viewpoints of the community members I have interacted with. I have talked with many people in the community face to face about education here. I have emailed the board members numerous times over the past three years and more times than not. There is no acknowledgement of my email, let alone a meaningful response. My goal is to be a board member who hears and acknowledges communication with me and to provide a meaningful response whenever possible. I ask for your support in the upcoming election. I hope what I've shared tonight allows you to know enough about me to help your decision. Thank you.
Thanks, Rob. Kelly. Kelly D. Marine.
My name is Kelly D. Marine. I grew up in Lyons, for those who don't know me. I moved to SOTUS about twenty-five years ago after meeting my husband. We have two children and our daughter is a current student at SOTUS Intermediate School. I am the general manager of an apple packing facility located in Wilke. Prior to that, I was a product manager at Garla in Palmyra. That experience brought me around the world and exposed me to many different people and many different cultures. However, it did not build my sense of community. Over time, being part of a local community has become very important to me and something that I've learned to appreciate. I have strong beliefs and I'm confident in my decision-making. I ask questions to understand situations and I do not need to be the loudest voice in a room. As a child, I became very aware of the importance of the Board of Education plays in every family. My brother was born with developmental disabilities and my parents worked very closely with the school board to ensure he had the proper education to meet his specific needs. While school boards have the responsibility of important tasks, such as building a budget, creating a challenging curriculum for students, and ensuring policies are administered fairly, the Board of Education is also responsible to ensure each student is given the opportunity to develop skills they will use for their lifetime. I take that very seriously. Individuals can get lost in the importance of big topics that affect a national audience. Being a member of the school board in a small community has the added importance of ensuring that the parents you see in a grocery store, church, and school events feel confident that you are providing their child with a program that meets their needs and fuels their success in life, whatever path they choose. Our job as a school board and as a community is to work towards building an environment that values economic excellence and to create a supportive environment that every student deserves. Whether a student chooses to enter the workforce, join the military, or pursue a higher education, our district should prepare students with the skills, knowledge, and confidence to succeed. I would appreciate your vote and if you have any questions, I also would encourage you to ask me at any time. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Our next candidate, Angelica Conklin.
Good evening. My name is Angelica Conklin. I have lived in SOTUS the majority of my life. I am currently employed for a company called Elmer Housing. We, it's a dry storage. I do their inventory and bookkeeping. I have five kids, three of them who are in school for SOTUS. What I would most like to see as a board member is advocacy for everyone who attends or teaches at SOTUS schools. I want to make sure that students have the confidence that they need when they graduate, whether they choose college, a trade, or military, that the teachers have the resources to achieve these goals. And as a mom of five, I know how important it is to make goals and do the best, have them do their best to achieve them. While I definitely encourage my own kids to try their best daily, I want to make sure that our own student body does the same. I was a quiet kid and never really spoke up for myself as a child. I hope that students and teachers, as well as the community, feel that if they can't speak up for themselves, that they can come to the board to be that voice. I also feel that this community has an important role in the education for our students. Some may not realize that everyone in the SOTUS school district plays a role in our school system. I would like to be able to bring the awareness to everyone living in SOTUS. Those are some of the reasons I would like to be part of this focus for Board of Education. Thank you.
Thank you, Angelica. Jim Sargent is next from the table. So we'll move on to our next candidate, which is Eric Bunniger, which is not present today, but he did reach out and ask if I would read something for him. So he emailed it to me, so I will read that now. So this is from Eric. Says, hello, everyone. My name is Eric Bunniger. Unfortunately, I was unable to attend the meeting in person this evening as the baseball team I coach has their first away game of the season. A little bit about me. I have lived in SOTUS my whole life and am a 2006 graduate of SOTUS. After graduation, I joined the United States Army and served in the infantry for six years, which included two combat tours in Iraq. Following my time in the Army, I started working at my wife's family's apple farm, Cherry Lawn Throw Farms, and became a partner on the farm four years ago. One reason I am running for the school board is that I want to see the students of SOTUS receive a quality education and part of that ensuring that is that we need to retain good teachers and staff members. I want to see teachers and staff feel supported and valued so they want to continue to work in our district and continue to give their all while teaching our children. Another reason I am running is my concern about how well our students are being prepared to transition to life after high school. As a business owner, it is becoming more evident that young adults are not well-prepared to enter the workforce and there are many who are consistently tardy and disrespectful on the job. As a district, we have an obligation to our students to guide them, encourage, and instill good habits and hold them to the highest standards in order for them to set, in order to set them up for success. I look forward to the opportunity to serve our district as a member of the Board of Education. Thank you. I tried to read it exactly what it was typed, so... And last but not least is Brian Meyer.
Hello. Yeah, Brian Meyer. I've served almost six years now on the Board of Education and for about eighteen, the last eighteen years of my life, I've served students and families that are at the school, the youth center in town here. I spent hours a week with students doing youth work at my church and supporting other efforts like Community Schools and Stedewalk in the area. Through those types of things, I've met and beautifully gotten to know many kids and families in the area and I know it sometimes frustrates some of these people about the school and I also understand to some degree at least what a challenge it can be to educate in SOTUS. To be honest with you, my life would be a little bit easier if I didn't continue on the Board of Education. It's, uh, and with a little bit of less conflict as well. It could be in my head, but I don't think that the last three or so years has been a particularly easy time to serve on a body like this. But I'm running again because, uh, it sounds like bragging, but because I think I do it well. I take time every month and I have a week to familiarize myself with what's coming up on our agenda and to understand all the issues, the other issues that come across to the board. I stay deeply connected to the community. I make decisions without prejudging and not based on who my friends are. And as uncomfortable as it is sometimes, I have always made decisions based on what I thought was the right thing to do. Besides the obvious, you know, my goal's for the district. You know, of course, better results in education, especially in core subjects. But also that it can be easier for, you know, for families and community members to access and find out what was going on in the school and what's being taught in the classes. It's not that I think that this has ever been hidden from them, but especially during this period of time, it was just, there's so many issues that cost so much trust between people. I would like to see that easier access again. I think other people are capable of doing and being the way that I just described. So if I don't, you know, win the opportunity to continue on the board, I'm happy to continue serving the community in ways that I always have been. But again, I decided to run again because it wasn't something I wanted to leave to chance for just other people. So thank you for listening.
Okay, just for the record, I was told that Mr. Jim Surgeon was not able to be here due to a medical procedure that he's having done. It wasn't that he just didn't have time to be here. He did relay that message, I just didn't get that until now, so he has to share that. So we, with that, that will conclude our lead the candidates and just keep in mind that we have four seats, six people running. So make sure you show up to vote so your voice can be heard, that's all they ask. With that, we will move on to our math module data.
Copy the backwards, I'm struggling. So we, Jackie and I are here to present about, a little bit about our Eureka Math Square assessment data. As you know, the district adopted Eureka Math Square for our math program for pre-K through sixth grade and so as the elementary school principal and the intermediate school principal, we are here to talk a little bit about the assessments that come with Eureka Math Square. So first of all, I wanted to talk a little bit about why we assess. So, you know, obviously in schools, there are many different types of assessments. For Eureka Math Square, there are a few really clear purposes for assessments. The purpose for these assessments is to enhance student learning, to generate data from many perspectives throughout instruction. So again, the assessments, which include quizzes and formal module assessments, are not the only way that we generate data, of course, through the program. There are many different ways that we generate data. However, it is an important piece to the puzzle. And also to support the teachers in making instructional decisions in order to accelerate student learning. So teachers are able to see where students might be struggling, but they're also able to see where students need to be enriched and pushed above where they might be in their grade level. So all assessments in Eureka Math Square are designed to inform instructional decisions. And it's important to know that effective assessment is not a separate event. So the intention is for it to be embedded into the instruction. And then also, we use assessments to gather evidence of the student's mathematical knowledge. Again, that's done every day as students are doing their work within small groups or independently. Questions they're answering during whole group instruction, through the quizzes, through the module assessments, through anecdotal notes and observational data that teachers might gather. And so all of that is really important for us to really know where our students are in math, what they need, and how we can accelerate them.
Thank you. So now, I'm going to talk about the different types of assessments that are there within Eureka Math Square. As you've heard me speak before, especially at the lower levels, there's two different kinds of assessments that our students are exposed to. Through UPK through second grade, they do observational assessments. And that can be interview style, especially at the kindergarten level. A teacher can work one-on-one with a student, asking them to do specific tasks. Or it can be observed throughout the module. So that's been really helpful to our teachers because as they're watching a student, they might see them get it four or five times correctly done in class, but perchance they get wrong on the assessment. But they know they know how to do it, they just made a mistake that time. So having that observational information on top of the paper-based assessment has been really beneficial. There's also our paper-based, which is, starts at first and second grade, and then computer-based begins at the beginning of third grade. And what our third grade did this year is they were really careful and cognizant of how to roll that out because it was the first time students were taking an assessment like that on the computer. They scabbled it, the process for students, giving them first paper-based and then they transferred their answers to online and then gradually over the course of the year, they went to strictly just online assessment, which has been great as we prepare for the computer-based testing that we've done in the last couple of weeks for the New York State assessment. Now, scoring can be a little bit different. It's not just a straight percentage. When we were all in school, you got 20 out of 25 right, you had your percentage, that was it. With our scoring, our standards, our New York State standards are embedded within achievement descriptors. So an achievement descriptor can include one or more than one standard within the curriculum. So you have to think of this as essentially a continuum. All students are assessed on grade level material. And in that continuum, they can be at not yet, partially proficient, proficient, highly proficient throughout. And then in third grade, they can be inconsistently proficient. So if you look at this as a continuum, we don't expect students to be proficient at the beginning of the year because that's the first time they've had instructional something. Over the course of the year, there's a scope and sequence that spirals and it allows for students to then be proficient in the various achievement descriptors by the end of the year. So when we start looking at some of this data, we have to think of it not as below grade level or on grade level or above. You're looking at all grade level assessments and where they are in that continuum and that progression towards being proficient over the course of the school year. So now we're going to dive into some data. And I wanted to show you, I know this is a lot of information in a very tiny chart, but I wanted to show you, with the observational assessment, this is a Module One kindergarten assessment. That was the observational assessment. Across the top, you will see that it says K Mod One Achievement Descripter One. So that was a specific skill that the student was assessed on. Now, this was all observational, so either done interview style or within the context of a lesson. And you can see students can fall either in highly proficient, proficient, partially proficient. And in this case, this classroom didn't have any that were not yet proficient. So they were somewhere in that progression, mastering those achievements descriptors. As a classroom teacher, to me, I would say, okay, achievement descriptor one, my kiddos really rock that. However, student J, they were partially proficient. They might need a little more exposure to that. I could do that in my wingtime. But when I look at achievement descriptor five or six, you'll notice that there was more partially proficient students and not nearly as many proficient or highly proficient. So that could mean, instructionally, I can take that information and tweak what I'm doing within my wingtime, which is what I need time, and work on those specific targeted skills. Now, as I said, the curriculum is spiraled. So sometimes exposure happens once or twice in one module and then will eventually loop back around on maybe a module three, four, or five. So there's, it just gives teachers such a plethora of information and data to pull from. And because you're watching them do it, you're seeing them and how their brain is working to see where you can go in and maybe tweak that misunderstanding to ensure that they are, become proficient in those standards. So then we go into, the data we're going to share now is based on the module assessments, paper-based or computer-based assessments. So for first grade, this was Module Four. And Module Four was the comparison and composition of length measurement. So a topic that we cover every year. And you'll see again that our students did really well if you're thinking of that continuum from not yet to being highly proficient. We had no one in this module scored not yet proficient. Everyone was either partially proficient, proficient, or highly proficient. So you're really looking at those blue pieces of the pie. And that is great data. Now granted, it was comparison of length and measurement. Kids enjoyed this. They're using non-traditional and traditional forms of measurement. But they, when I was in a first grade classroom and when they were teaching this unit and they were using centimeter cubes to measure caterpillars on a page, or butterflies, or trucks. And they were talking about lining up the endpoints. It would have too much excess, so it could not be 13 centimeter cubes. They had to be 12 centimeter cubes. And this was the language that the kids were using. So as we've talked about before, the discourse that has come from this implementation of this program has been huge. The students are talking more readily than they ever did and they're embedding the vocabulary within their lessons. So it was a really great lesson to watch, but this was just really great data from our first graders. When we're looking at second grade, Module Four was addition and subtraction within 1,000. So not easy. And I know there are several parents on the board that have kiddos that are using this program and I know it's sometimes it can be a little painful from time to time as we're learning new strategies. But sitting in a second grade class during an observation, a little girl looks over to me and she goes, "Miss May, I'm doing the compensation method." And I told her, I go, "I'm really impressed because that doesn't work for my brain." And she goes, "Oh, this is how it works for my brain." And she could explain to me what she was doing to use this compensation method and articulate her thinking, which is huge. And that's where some of our students have fallen down before on state assessments is they couldn't articulate why they were doing it. When we were students, it was the rote memorization. Our teachers really didn't go into the why behind it. It was memorize these stacks, memorize these fractions, how do you multiply, divide? And that was it. But our students are understanding the why behind it now. And that is going to be so important down the road as we're laying these foundational skills. So looking at this, 50%, 49% of the class fell at proficient and another 20% fell at highly proficient. And those kiddos that were in the partially proficient, this isn't the only time in this year that they're going to be working on those skills. It's continued in Module Five and Six. So we just really wanted to show you that information. So when we move into third grade, I showed you both Module Three and Four because now we get into, there's more in the progression. So we have not yet, partially proficient, inconsistently proficient, proficient, and highly proficient. So those kids that are functioning at that not yet, now that can include anyone that may have an IEP or be an English language learner, and it's at 4%. But that is a very small number of our students when you look at the overall, big picture of the grade level. With roughly 80 students in that cohort, that's a very small percentage of those students. Those students that are partially proficient, they're working towards grade level proficiency. The inconsistently proficient essentially means that at that moment in time, they didn't get it. But they may have gotten it at another point in time. Depending on the modules and the assessments that they've done, they've scored either proficient or partially proficient. So they're not fully solidly proficient yet. So I really like that inconsistently proficient that starts coming out in third grade. So this unit was actually multiplying and dividing within 100. So again, a significant topic for our students. But if you're looking at the blue pieces and even that light peach piece that's inconsistently proficient, our students are really working hard towards being proficient on these topics and skills. And then in Module Four, that was multiplication and area. Not an easy topic and often one that really stumps kids. But again, the data looks really good and our third graders, they take the math test next week, the state test. And honestly, speaking with the team, we're feeling confident and we hope our confidence is, I don't know how to say it, but we hope that we're right with this because looking at the data and the rigor of this program, some of the test questions that they've practiced from released questions, the kids are like, "Oh, that was easier than what we're doing every day." That's what we want them to feel successful. We want them to feel confident that they know these math skills, that they're able to really feel good about themselves as math students and mathematicians. Any question on the elementary data?
Is it common to see, like, overseeing there? So I got, I noticed, like probably everyone did, the early grades, all proficient, highly proficient, partially. And the later grades still look good, but there was some drop on. Is that common to see across other districts? Is it just so much more demanding at the upper grades or?
Well, so also remember that we implemented the UPK through six. So our third, fourth, and fifth and sixth grade students, there were some gaps. Like they had not had that instruction in their earlier years. So we keep talking to the grade levels, wait until next year. Like if our data looks this good now, what's going to happen when these kids have two years under the belt? So you have to think about, it was a whole different structure, vocabulary, the format of the lessons themselves were different than what we were doing in the past. So I really think that we'll see those not yet close even smaller. You're always going to have your students that are struggling, but I really think that we'll start closing those not yet gaps as our kids have more exposure to this.
The other question that occurred to me is like, not to undermine the confidence you're talking about, but if it turned out that like the state scores, you know, turned out much different than what you're seeing on the assessments, would that, what do you think that would reveal about the assessment? Would we be looking for something else?
I wouldn't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater just based on one data point from a state assessment. I think over time, we would have to see with this progression. How did the rest of the region score? You know, when we look at the data, the state testing data in the fall, we look at the region as well. So was it a SOTUS glitch or was it a Wayne County situation? I think that's really important to look at the different cohort data across the state and our region. But also as more schools are implementing this, looking at their data. We've asked a couple of questions of our rep from Eureka Math Square because I'm trying to think, I think it was Module Three for third grade, or maybe it was Module Two. Our students did really well on that module. And we wanted to know, is, does everyone that's using Eureka Math Square, does everyone do well on Module Two or was that a SOTUS? Like, we need to be proud of that. So they're actually looking into getting data so that we can compare with other schools that are using it across the state and across the country. Because I think that would be really helpful, go to your point as, is it working? Is it something that we need to change in our implementation or our focus? So there's still some underlying pieces that we would need to come up with and to figure out. But I think, I'm going to knock on wood, I really feel that, we feel so strongly about this that we're in a good space. I'm really hopeful. Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question. You show that the goal is to have the students are expected to be proficient on an achievement descriptor by the end of the year. In kindergarten Module One, you had, it looks like about 10 achievement descriptors. And then the later grades, it really only shows one module. This is the assessment for May, the end of the year is next month. And almost 60% of the particular module you show for third grade still have work to do to become proficient. Like is there, is there confidence? I lose it, there's confidence in the assessment coming up, but I mean, 60% is a big gap for this particular module to have our students catch up to be proficient. And also, is that representative of a lot of the other achievement descriptors for other grades?
So you have to understand that I didn't break this down into the individual achievement descriptors for the module assessment. So in the different modules in the other grades, just as you saw that kindergarten span, that's also how the upper grade levels do as well. So I didn't break it down into individual achievement descriptors. But there is a great chart that I can share with you that actually breaks it down and shows where the students fall towards proficiency on the various achievement descriptors as well.
Okay, yeah, because I mean, I know, like I said, the end of the year is next month and if the goal is for every student to be proficient, it seems like there's still a lot of work to do.
So you have to think that this is only that one topic though. This was one unit assessment and not the overall, their overall skills as a third grade student. If that makes sense?
Yep.
Did I answer your question, Walter?
Yep.
Any other questions? Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Michael.
All right, thank you. So the question, Ryan, that you had about, you know, as we go up into the upper grade levels, I'm hopeful that I'll also be able to add to that as well as all the, some of the things that you just brought up. Because, you know, as we look at the intermediate school data, I will talk about that as we go along. So in the intermediate school, we gave the opportunity for teachers, especially at the beginning of the year, to decide if their students were going to start with paper-based testing or if they were going to go right into the computer-based testing. So in, in grade, really when they start in grade three and above to go into sixth grade, it's a little bit, it's a little bit different than it is in the lower grades. So while it is still a spiral curriculum, often it might spiral during the year and some of the things they're learning in Module One or Two could be coming up again in Modules Four or Five. But it could also spiral from year to year. And so one of the things that we saw with this year, which we knew that this was definitely a learning year and as the students get older, as Jackie said, as they're up in the grades, it was a bigger lift for them because they did not have Eureka Math Square in this program. in this program, this vocabulary in elementary school. So for our students, when we look at it, we're really looking to see where are they? How are they doing? And what are the ways that we can as instructors and as a school figure out exactly where they may be struggling, where they're doing well so that we can make sure that we are meeting them where they are? So I, I shared a couple of different module assessments. Again, just like down at the elementary school, the really great thing about the Eureka Math Square, it's their parent company is Great Minds and that's the program that they take the assessments on. It does break them down right there on the achievement descriptors and it will tell you exactly what the students might have missed so that you can use your instructional time, whether it be your whole group instructional time or during, what Jackie referred to as win time, it's intervention, same thing. At the end of the year school, teachers can then make those instructional decisions to see how they can best support their students. So if we take a look up here, module two for fourth grade was place value concepts for multiplication and division. This would have been a little bit earlier in the year, probably right around that, you know, end of October, early November time. It's important to remember that this is all grade level performance. So this pie chart looks different than a lot of the data that we have shared with you before. Typically, we share data in a continuum where, you know, we might have the rather dark red if we're thinking about I-Redy on the left, and then we're going up to the, you know, yellow and then the light green and dark green. In the program, they share it as a circle. And so what that does is it really helps to show how this really is a continuum. And students, depending on what the topic is, could move within that continuum for each of these achievement descriptors. And so that's why we wanted to show the data this way. So because it is a different way to look at the data than typically we have presented it. Because we don't want to look at not yet as being, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't flesh out to be, you know, one to two grade levels below like it would with I-Redy data or some of the other data that we've looked at. So what it really says is that all fourth graders took and learned fourth grade material. And throughout that fourth grade material, we had students who are not yet proficient on, in this particular example, place value concepts for multiplication and division. We have some that partially were able to, you know, achieve at that fourth grade level. And remember, we're looking at where they should be at the end of fourth grade. Some of them are inconsistent. They were able to, you know, achieve really, really well on some. Other ones, they, you know, still needed some help with. And then we have our proficient and highly proficient students. One of the things that we really tried to cognizant of, especially as they got into the older grades, is the fact that they did not always, you know, through instruction, I did it as a teacher, we would use different tips and tricks and things to have students learn. So like we would use the big C to figure out different math, you know, topics and things with factors and multiples and everything like that. But then when they get to the next grade, that teacher might use a different set of vocabulary or tips and tricks than the teacher below, and then it confuses the students. One of the really good things about the Eureka Math Square program is that our students are learning the same vocabulary. However, this year, we can't see that until the students next year come up into the grade level. Because the incoming fourth graders who are in third grade right now are going to have that vocabulary and they're going to be starting even further forward than our students who were just starting with this program this year. And so we're very excited to see that. It's also important to know, a lot of our instruction was already aligned. This program is a New York State-aligned curriculum. We, of course, are teaching to the New York State standards and they are assessed on the New York State standards. And so this really helps us to see where students are on that standard, or on that progression of the standards. So module six for the intermediate school for fourth grade, you're going to see that it looks like we skipped ahead a whole lot. Our teachers were, they actually asked in fourth grade if they could go to module six before and put it out of order. And that's because module six is angle measurements and plane figures and they knew that that is usually tested heavily on the state tests. And so they wanted to be able to do that module prior to the state test because it wouldn't be helpful if they did it afterwards. And so of course, we gave them that permission to do it. Now you will notice that compared to the last slide, we have quite a few students in the partially proficient range. And so when we look at that, we can look at a lot of different factors. One, that's pretty difficult, doing angle measurements and plane figures. And we can also look at the fact that, you know, for fourth grade, for fifth grade, for sixth grade, this is the first year that they've had this program. There are growing pains when it comes to any sort of implementation of anything. But our students are important and we could not wait in order to get a, an aligned curriculum and to make sure that our students and our teachers were all on the same page. And so you're going to see from module to module that students proficiency is going to fluctuate. And that's how we make those instructional decisions to see where, what do we need to do to get them to where they need to be. If I go on to fifth grade, when we started module two, this data is actually for half of our fifth grade because again, as I mentioned, we were, we gave the teachers the opportunity to begin with paper-based tests that they wanted to. For this module, one half of our fifth grade, so the one teacher decided that she wanted to go right into the computer-based testing and then the other teacher opted to continue with the paper-based testing for that time. And so that's why there's only one class represented in this one. That was addition and subtraction with fractions. So that would have been more towards the beginning of the year. And then if we take a look at their most recent module, which was module four, this is the entire fifth grade and that's place value concepts for decimal operations. So again, you know, this is all, every single student is receiving grade level work. When they take these assessments, this is all fifth grade. So it's not like I-Redy where it adjusts depending on how they're doing. This is all their grade level work. Now sixth grade opted to start right away with the computer assessments. They knew that we were going to be taking computer assessments for our state tests and they just decided that they were going to jump right in and go with the computer-based assessments. And the students were really able to adapt quite well to that. So this was their first, their module one data. For module one, they were the grade level that decided again to go right with the computer-based assessments. This was ratios, rates and percents. So you can see where our students were falling there. And then if we take a look again at their most recent module data, this is, module four was expressions and one-step equations. So again, when we're looking at this, we're really looking at going right into that program and targeting, one, the students who might need some extra assistance with some of these concepts of the achievement descriptor, excuse me, descriptors. But also looking at how we can enrich and push those students who are consistently in a highly proficient range that probably can really go to above grade level work. I also do want to know because Tuesday and Wednesday, the intermediate school engaged in the New York State Math Test. And so I was really interested to get feedback from, you know, the staff, but especially from the students on how they felt the New York State Math Test went, especially because we do have this new program and it's been new and a learning experience for everybody. And I especially liked one sixth grader who, when I stopped in, you know, you get the kids sometimes, they're like, "Oh, it was easy. Oh, wow, you know, it was a state test. It was okay." You know, and it was fair. But she said to me, she said, "Well, it was way easier than the module assessments that I take for Eureka Math Square." And so to me, that shows me that the learning that they are doing in the classroom, the rigor that is happening in the classroom is preparing our students for those state tests. It isn't all about preparing them for the state test. It's about preparing them for life and being able to know how to, you know, think logically, how to think mathematically, and again, not just rote memorization. And for, you know, that is a learning curve for many students. So I am hopeful, of course, you know, I don't know yet how they did on the test, but I'm hopeful that our data is going to show that the rigor that we're engaging our students are in is preparing them for that state testing and for life beyond school. So before I ask if there's any other questions, I did want to go into some of our next steps. And Jackie, feel free to chime in if you would like to. So we will be doing some summer professional development. Last summer, the professional development around Eureka Math Square was really learning the program and how to teach it. And this summer, now that we have our staff who teach math know exactly what to do, we're looking at how can we use the program to optimize our instruction? What are ways or things that we, that were part of the program that we just could not really implement fully this year or spend as much time on this year in our learning fates? The UPK through second grade are going to begin the year with their observational assessments. Again, remember that's one of the things that everyone was learning how to do. So they're going to start the year with those. For third through sixth grade, we will start the year with everybody doing the online assessments. We had a lot of people nervous about the computer-based tests and if I can say one thing, it was smooth. It was very, very smooth, the kids taking the test on the computer. We didn't have technology failures, you know, if there were very small things like them typing in a code, you know, incorrectly and then just having to go back. But really, the entire from start to finish, taking the test on the computer, I think really went very, very well. And so there's no reason for us not to start those online assessments for Eureka Math Square right from the very first module next year. And then of course, we're going to continue to develop systems to collect data from those observational assessments. The students at the intermediate school, we don't do those observational assessments. But I can imagine that, you know, that, that's a lot of data. And, you know, to collect it and make sure that it's a way that can be presented in a clear and concise manner is something that we're going to continue to work with in the school district.
Anything else? No, I just want to say a condition that as we, you know, as you said, this was the first year of doing this and it was a big lift. But our teachers were already being forward-thinking and thinking of what they're going to do next year. You know, the first time you ever teach anything, it can be tough. And knowing what to expect next year ahead of time is going to be so helpful for them. And they know that, ooh, you know what, this was tricky. I'm going to go about doing this in a maybe slightly different way. Still sticking to the format of the units, but just knowing ahead of time where kids might get stuck. And that's always so hard to know when you're doing something for the first year. And I don't, and I still think that it's really important to remember that it will be your secondary implementation, all of those students that are moving up to the next grade level, they're going to come in with another year of other than about. And I think that's going to be so beneficial for our students and our teachers moving forward. Questions?
Yeah, I have a question. The very large partially proficient sections in some of the later grades kind of sparked a question. And Jackie, you said, as we went through school, it was percentages, if we got a twenty out of twenty-five, I know I got an eighty. So is there a correlation of like a percentage for the student to gauge their scores, proficient or partially proficient to like help us understand how they're scored? Like if a kid gets fifteen out of twenty-five, is that still partially proficient? Or is it, is it related to that at all?
So, kind of. So I have been delving into the world of my Excel spreadsheets or my Google Sheets. So especially at the younger grades, you take, because not, when you go to score as a teacher, not all of the questions students should master at that point in time. So if they got, I hope I explained this well. What you do is it gets factored in, so you have your raw score. And then we take that raw score, get somewhat of a percentage, and then there's a number that tells each module to multiply by. And then that will give you a range between a zero and a four, and then that falls into one of those ranges. So giving you a straight percentage is really not indicative to maybe how a student did.
But there is a rigor matrix that puts them?
There is. And I've gotten to like nerd out so much, I create these spreadsheets that I can put in the raw score and it automatically populates for me. So I've been living my best life with my Google Sheets right now. You know, as you, I can't speak to the upper grades, but I know that especially in first grade and second grade, that's what we've had to create. And luckily, once you get to the online portion, it calculates it for you because you're taking the assessment online. So that's approach to the online portion. But that's why we're still trying to figure out how to show you this data in a holistic manner that's true to how our students are performing.
Okay.
Can I just add something more to that? So, you know, another thing that I think is really important is, you know, we're used to getting a test score and, oh, yep, I got a sixty-two on this test, I got a ninety on this test. And, you know, but what does that mean? And so one of the things that we really, you know, think is important for students is, as they go up and especially as they start to get those number or letter grades, is really digging into, well, okay, you've got, you know, a sixty-two. So what parts of this did you do well on and what parts do you still need assistance with and you need some extra learning? Okay, you got a ninety, but that doesn't mean that, you know, we shouldn't, A, really push you to excel and enrich you in the areas that you did really well, but, you know, also, all right, you need to work a little bit on this. So one of the things I think is really important is that it's not, yes, they do get a grade. They do get a percentage grade, at least, you know, in the, the upper levels in fourth through sixth grade. They do get that, that does go in there. But we're, they're also able to see and dive into exactly what made that grade. And so I think that that part is really important because we want those grades to be meaningful to the students and for them to understand why they got it, not just, okay, that's, you know, I got twenty out of twenty-five and so, you know, I got an eighty on the test.
So it does, it does really help though because it's based on the achievement descriptors, which are state standards correlated. And you can really isolate down, just like I showed you that kindergarten spreadsheet. I'm not going to worry about eighty-one because my kids rock like eighty-five or six. I'm going to spend more time there during my intervention time to make sure students really get it. And you can literally go in to a student and see where they're struggling and what skills they've already got, which I think is so, we have so much data. We're just still really trying to figure out what to do with it and where to go because I don't think we ever anticipated knowing this much on each individual student. You know, I shared that one snapshot, that was module one. They're in module five now for kindergarten. So like we have so much data.
So you talked a little, sorry, you talked a little bit about paper versus computer. Now, is that for the elementary school as well? Do they have that option?
Starting at third grade.
Starting at third grade, they have the option to do either one?
So this year, we allowed the, the teachers and for what was best for their class to be able to have the option to do, you know, either or to begin with, especially as we got more used to the program and the systems and everything like that. We have decided, because the kids have done really well with it and at this point are all taking the assessments on the computer, that we are going to start with computer-based testing. That being said, of course, if an individual student or something like that needed to take it on paper for their own, you know, well-being or because it is a part of a program or plan for them, of course, we would do that. The goal isn't to test them on their skills on the computer, it's to test them on their skills in mathematics. And so, you know, we can always look at those by case-by-case basis, but the vast majority of our students are ready and like and have learned how to use that computer-based system.
Yeah, that was, that was kind of getting leveraged in the next, was like, did you notice a difference between the computer testing or the computer work versus the paper? You know, some students will struggle with the computer or some students may struggle on paper. I could just, I didn't know. Have you noticed a difference?
It was more because third grade, we scaffolded. And so they went, they took it, the first, the first module, they took it on paper and then they had them transfer their answers in to get used to it. And so we were building that stamina. And I love that the third grade team came up with that. That wasn't something that the programs had to do. The third grade team said, "What is best for our students? They've never done this before. We're going to make this progression for them." So by January, when they hit module three, it was all online. You know, the kids were great. They had their sheet-bag paper, you know, they knew what to do. They had all their work there and then they can transfer it onto the computer. So it's really been a great way to build their skills and prepare them for this next step of the state assessments.
In the state assessments, the tools and everything are online. So no longer do we have to So no longer do you have your clear plastic protractor and ruler in front of you in order to use them. That is not an option on computer-based testing. And so, another really great thing about this program, as well as the online practice assessments, the samplers that students have been engaging in, is that they were ready to be able to use those. I'm going to be honest, one of, I think, my biggest fears was that, you know, that whole doing math on the computer and having to manipulate a protractor or a ruler on the computer and get it to work. But the online assessments through Eureka Math Square, as well as the assessments that teachers put onto eDotrino, one of our platforms, as well as the New York State samplers that are provided, really helped to prepare our students for, to be comfortable with that online portion or with those online tools, especially for the math. I think that was the scariest part for me.
Right, I have one more question. I just wanted to second what you said. I have, my daughter's in sixth grade now. She was the one that we talked to her now, but she did say the same thing. I asked her how her testing went and she came back and told me that it was, you know, it seemed much easier than the testing that they've been doing in the classroom. So, I myself am also hopeful that, you know, that's, you know...
I'm hopeful that with the computer-based testing, I know that's not a this year thing, but I am hopeful that we will start to get that state test data back earlier as well than with the paper-based tests because, you know, that would be so helpful to be able to use as students are going into the next grade level instead of having to wait until we've already started the next grade to get that data. I don't know if that will happen, but I'm really hopeful that it will. Anything else?
Well, thank you very much, appreciate that. Just a quick announcement for those that are here in public. There's an issue with the sound on the live stream. It's being recorded. And so, we'll make sure we have that up on our YouTube channel tomorrow, the whole, the whole meeting. Bree's going to, she didn't want to do it in the middle of that, but she's going to put it in the chat to let the viewers that won't know but were aware that there's an issue of the audio and they can access the full thing tomorrow on the YouTube channel. So, just those glitches, unfortunately.
All right, with that, we'll move on to information. Maybe you have any questions about information? Okay. We'll go on to public participation. Nothing there? Thank you. Do you have a...
Can I, can I give a public information?
Yeah, just...
My name's Lori Burby.
Yeah, we'll just, yeah, go ahead. You can come up and then sign before you leave.
Okay. I've got 73, 20 state law, 14.
Lori, can you come to the podium? Just so that one is recorded, otherwise the public won't be able to hear you.
When I served on the board, I didn't have such things.
You couldn't get the board agenda on the computer because there wasn't one hardly. And so, the last board, school board meeting, I attended a few since then, since 2002. And that was in 18 years to date. And just for the heck of that, I'm not here to brag about it or anything. It was some of the best work I ever did in my life because you're affecting your future, you're working with great people, dedicated teachers that are unbelievable. Not paid a lot either, by the way. We think they are, but they're not. So that's my, I'm there. To all of you who serve, I want to say thank you. This is a lot of work. It's a lot of time. Sometimes you feel like, why in the world am I doing it? And trust me, there were some of those for me too. But you will never regret it. Thank you. This is a great school district. I went to Marion as a kid, thought that was the best school in the world. Then I went to Williamson for 18 years and I thought that was the best school in the world. But right now, I think you guys are doing a great job. Data-driven decision-making, that was a dream when I was on the board. You guys are doing it. And that fact-based management is awesome. Business should love that. Communication skills. We talk about all the things that are bad about phones and things like that, but here you are in a classroom at a young age, teaching children how to think for themselves and then do the math as a result and trying to work with their brain in the way it works. From wiggle chairs to jumping up and down to sitting and doing rote learning, that's a great change. So I'd like to thank you and I'm sorry to take any of your time, but I appreciate everything you do.
Thank you. Okay, now we will move on to consensus motion number one. Do I have a motion to approve?
Vote.
Alden? Do I have a second?
Second.
Sarah? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Do I have a motion to approve consensus motion number two?
Motion.
Sarah? Do I have a second? Kelly? All in favor? Any opposed? Any public participation required? All right. Do I have a motion to approve consensus motion number three? Tony? Do I have a second?
Second.
Brian? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. You know, that last motion is kind of tough when you have some of the teachers that we had, I had in school and you see them retiring. So, I thank them for their service too. So, Nelson, do you have an agenda for next meeting?
Yeah, the June meeting is one of our best ones of the year and that's where we will do our annual student awards and we will also recognize those folks who are retiring from the district. The other piece is that we will have a reception for all the students who will be getting awards that night in the cafeteria. Regina, does that start at six? Do you recall?
I believe it begins at six.
Yeah, we'll double-check that, but we will have it, not let you know. But there will be a reception before, for any of the students getting awards that night. And we're really looking forward to that. So that's, that's the whole meeting, you know, in terms of the presentations.
All right, thank you.